Good evening. I'll call to order the special meeting for the common council for Tuesday, November 5th. Let the record, oh, sorry. Will the clerk please call the attendant's room?
Alderman Benyon, here. Alderman Panis, here. Alderwoman Forney.
Here.
Alderwoman McCall.
Here.
Alderman Robinson.
Here.
Alderman Anastasia.
Here.
And President Crawford.
Here.
Do your report.
Okay. So first, we've got a short special meeting here. I need to make a motion. This has to be added to the agenda?
No, after the decision, I would recommend that you motion to suspend the rules and amend the resolution to include her name within the resolution.
Thank you. Okay, so our discussion item first and foremost is the confirmation of a mayoral appointment for the city attorney that would be effective November 5th, 2024. And this is Resolution 102-24. At this time, I'll ask the mayor to please introduce his candidate for city attorney. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you for entertaining this special meeting to get this taken care of. I appreciate it. We have with us tonight Bridgette McQ Marshall, who is from Randolph. She is an attorney since 2006. She has a background as being a town attorney since 2007 to the present. She has been prosecutor for various matters before town courts from 2007 to present. And in talking to Bridgette, the distance is not going to be an issue. And we will have her available at least two days a week. We'll set the hours for that. She'll be here on, which is critical on Thursday's prosecutor cases before the city court to do with code violations, animal violations, and things like that. So I want to introduce you to Bridgette Marshall. She's sitting right in the jury box there. And if anyone has any questions, she's here to answer that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome Attorney Marshall. Attorney Marshall?
I go by Marshall.
Marshall, okay. At this time, I would, we've all been provided with her resume. Does anyone on the council have any questions for Attorney Marshall? Alderwoman McCall?
Thank you. So, welcome. So my question is, in looking at Randolph and Cold Springs, which is where you're now the attorney for the towns, right? What would you see as maybe any adjustment moving to Olean? Not that we're a huge city, but we fall under the city category and are significantly larger than those two towns.
I agree. I think it will be a bit of a learning curve. However, I do think, I don't have a problem as an attorney, but it's something that I'm not familiar with, with researching it, reaching out to another attorney that I think would be competent, who's ran into the issue before. I don't think it'd be an issue, but I do think it's going to be a lot different than a town.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Robinson?
How you doing, Alderman Robinson? First, the half hour drive is only roughly a half hour. I wouldn't be concerned with the drive from Randolph. But my question to you was basically on the work experience and the fact that everything was still listed as present. I was just curious as to, do you foresee or do you think that there will be any issues with being available to the Olean council when in need with everything else that you're responsible for, which is current and present?
I don't think so. I've talked in depth to your former attorney to see what the job entails, the hours it looks like. And the big thing I've gathered from also the mayor is that Thursday mornings is when you guys prosecute your local laws. So I've already figured that I'll be here for Thursday mornings, obviously. Also, Tuesday nights probably before the board meetings, so I'm available if you guys have questions before your meeting. That's tentatively, I don't have an issue either. If you guys think something's not working out, it's pretty approachable. If you just say to me, Bridgette, like, you know, could you do this instead? Can we try that? I'm pretty easy.
You answered the big one on the Tuesday night one. I think that was the biggest concern for everyone's availability for Tuesday night.
Yeah. Well, any other questions? I'd like to piggyback off that as well. And just, obviously, we are public servants secondary, right? And it's not our primary roles. And so we're in a lot of ways amateur as far as New York State law goes and local code goes and interpretations. And specifically during a meeting, how comfortable, and obviously there is a learning curve. I see that you have had some municipal experience, certainly in your past. But how do I want to word this?
Just say it.
Well, no, I, you know, I don't want to put you on the spot because I understand there are some issues that you have to research and look up. But what we're missing is an interpretation of something in the here and now as we're conducting business. Obviously, not to put yourself in jeopardy, but once you learn the ropes, do you feel comfortable that you'll be able to read, say, a passage of a code and give us an interpretation to your best ability in the present moment while we're conducting business? That's really a big one that I think all of us have run into. It's just, what is a legal interpretation of this?
Yeah, I think in general, I'm pretty good being able to read it and give you the gist of what it's saying. Of course, you can always go and look at case law that will define it differently. But I don't have a problem reading passages and saying, this is what this means. I might have to go research this further, but...
That, I'm good. I'm good with that. Other questions? Alderman Panis?
Yeah, I guess the question I have, something that means the most to me, is kind of in the recent years, our county DA, local attorney have been a little behind the eight ball on prosecuting those who violate the local laws. And I don't, it seems like it might be personal. I just want to know for my vote, if, you know, you're interested in being aggressive, that going after those who violate the laws of the city.
So I'm willing to do what the board essentially wants me to do, what direction. Now, I'm also going to tell you, though, if, like, you're telling me this case, like, you need to do A, B, C, and D on, if there's issues with the case, I'll be upfront with you and say, well, the problem is, this is kind of a dug because of these reasons. Or if I don't think there'll be a problem, we can go forward in that direction. And like I said, if I'm not aggressive enough, just let me know. If I'm too aggressive, let me know. I don't know how the city of Olean versus, like, the towns are, but usually they just want the problem fixed, right? So I'll need direction. If that's what you guys are looking for, or, you know, if, like, after they, the same regulars I'll call, then you prefer this to happen to those people. So I don't have a problem taking guidance from you guys and what you're looking for, just let me know.
Alderman Anastasia?
No, John, I don't really have any questions with Bridgette. Welcome to the city. Just reading, because I read your resume and didn't have any questions. But I'm just looking at the resolution earlier on my cell phone, and I didn't see a salary. Is the salary the same amount, or is it, does it be put in this resolution?
It'll be the same as what we were paying the prior attorneys, 625.
Anything further? Okay, I don't see anything further. So at this time, we do need some sponsors, and we need to amend the resolution to include Bridgette A. McQ Marshall as the new city attorney here. So I'm going to make a motion to suspend the rules. Could I go second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Benyon. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. I'll make a motion to amend Resolution 102-24 to include the name of the city attorney to read Bridgette A. McQ Marshall. Could I go second for that?
Aye.
Seconded by Alderman Benyon. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, motion carried. Any further discussion on this? Okay, I see no further discussion. I'll ask the clerk to please call a roll.
Should we respond?
Oh, I apologize. We were doing the motion. I'll make a motion. Could I get a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman McCall. Sorry. Thank you. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Resolution number 102. Call a roll.
Yep.
Resolution number 102-24, no PL, by Alderman Crawford, seconded by Alderwoman McCall to confirm the mayoral appointment of the city attorney effective November 5th, 2024. Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passage unanimous.
Okay, congratulations, City Attorney Mark. Okay, at this time, I'll make a motion to adjourn our special meeting. Could I go second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman McCall. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. Adjourn.
Oh, we're not, we're just, we haven't started yet, for sure.
They were like, man, that was quick.
You thought it was bad, huh? No, that was just a quick sniffing.
I saw a hundred disappointment in Jesus.
They were like...
So close.
We picked the shortest meeting ever.
Hot mic. You gotta remind us of that. It's hot mic.
That's us.
Sixteen more minutes.
Huh?
Nope.
It's five thirty.
Oh, cool. Well, let's go. We got enough for an hour and a half.
I think JR's five is the break, too.
Let's go.
Okay.
No.
No, we can go.
No. Bergen, I'm not...
Tiffany and I, we worked on that.
I got to schedule one.
I appreciate it. That was your idea.
Well, we appreciate it, because we thought we had to wait.
No.
Had to, had to.
Who's first?
Strategic planning.
All right, let's go. Motion adjourned. All right, I don't need to wait for Benyon. He's not even here, is he?
No.
No. All right, I'll call to order strategic planning for Tuesday, November 5th. Let the record show that all Aldermen are present. Approval of minutes of previous committee meeting for Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024. I'll make a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Unfinished business, we have none. New referrals for consideration, comprehensive development plan 2025 to 2045 seeker, and referrals to planning boards, city and county, and zoning board of the city. I'm guessing that's Mr. Burden there.
Yeah, we have Carrie here, and she's going to go over all of that.
She snuck in.
I did. Oh, is that what we do?
Okay, that works better.
Okay, cool.
The microphone doesn't always...
Thank you. Tiffany, if you may recall, it was in July of 2021, our office had submitted a consolidated funding application. And with that, we were awarded funding from the Department of State and Empire State Development to go towards this project. In addition, we were able to secure $5,000 from the county's municipal match program, and an additional $5,000 from the Simmons Initiative funding. So the project's been paid in full in its entirety by grant funds with this. From that time, we went out, we solicited firms, we'd hired CNS. That would have been in May of '23, because, as you may recall, it took some time for the contracts to come in for us to start the project with the state agencies. So we've started our committee meetings in July of 2023. We held a total of six task force committee meetings. We've held two public meetings. We've referred the draft plan to Alderman a little while ago. We've sent it out to the public. It's in the library. It's on our dedicated webpage to this project on the city's website. We've put it on our social media. And so we're really just trying to get additional input from our community. We've asked for comments to be returned this month. And then in addition, how our laws are written, it's referred to be sent to the planning board. I thought it would only be fair to provide it to the zoning board. And in addition, we need to refer it to the county planning board. So I'm seeking permission for that. And if I could just highlight some of the things that the task force committee did flesh out for this new plan, it's not an update. Our plan before is still in fact, from 2005 to 2025. However, we realized it wasn't being utilized. It really just ended up being a plan and a thread ring binder on, I think, really my shelf, and on the city website. But some of the main visions and goals that came out of it over the next 20 years for us to really improve upon and complete is to improve our housing in our neighborhoods, develop parks and recreation, enhance economic development, cultivate transportation, promote optimal and efficient land use, improve public services and infrastructure, enhance quality of life, and prioritize fiscal sustainability.
Okay. So is this just informational session, Carrie? Are you looking for any direction from us at this point, or in the next week or two, or what can we do?
Yep. So it's just information that we're nearing towards a project close. We'll accept any and all comments and incorporate those revisions. And ultimately, we would like for the plan to go into effect in January of 2025. In order for that to happen, we have to do the seeker. And I determined it to type one action, so it's a coordinated review. With the council being the sponsor agency for the plan itself, it would be appropriate for the council to seek the lead agency status. So I would need these resolutions to be passed so I can make the referrals next Wednesday, and then start the seeker process. That's a 30-day runtime. So I would be revisiting the council with this in December if all agencies concur with the lead agency intent for that status by the common council.
Okay, so Tiffany, can we get those, you know, work with Carrie to bring forward those resolutions for next Tuesday?
Yep.
Okay. Any comments or questions at this time? Alderwoman McCall?
So, you know, I read through the whole plan. It looks very good. I like the responsible agencies that are identified. But kind of like you said, with the 2025 to 2025 wasn't really being utilized, my only question in terms of looking at that is, you know, how do we build in the accountability that it will be utilized? You know, whether or not that is a, maybe every six months, report out on certain items or an annual report out? Because, you know, for example, one of the items was, I think, to improve nightlife or something, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, what are we doing to improve nightlife? Those kinds of things. Because I think that's important for the residents to see that it's a living document and not just kind of a shelf sitter or, you know, a coffee table book.
Yeah. Sonia, I do believe it's written in our laws that it should be reviewed upon an annual basis and considered for updating. So I mean, that's a really good point that, I mean, we could do that on an annual basis and see in that matrix of potential projects, what is the council's priority perhaps at the beginning of a year? And, I mean, we could all, because it's supposed to be like our blueprint going forward for divisions, entities, I mean, different community organizations. And that's why we want so much input from our citizens to make sure that they're comfortable with the projects as well.
That's great. Alderman Robinson?
I just had some, some comment, because, you know, this has been out for a while. And I know there's a lot of people in the city of Olean that probably have not read this in detail. And I think that a lot of this, it pertains to our future, right? It pertains to Olean and where we're going in direction. So I want to just point out a couple of things that I read in there that I believe that the city should know about, and maybe that would entice them to read it. Like, I was very happy to read that, the, trying to read my own scribble here. I love the direction and the focus that we're going with our housing in our neighborhoods. There was also language that mentioned the focus on improving parks and rec, along with the city amenities. There was things that I liked about the focus on tourism program. I think that would be very beneficial to this city. Identifying developmental sites and hosting events with business and potential investors. Granted, I am not a big fan of tax breaks, but I do understand how it works. And sometimes you have to give a little to get a little. I like the proposed concepts that were mentioned for the 2200 block of West State Street and development of the 1400 block of Buffalo Street. I'm not going to say anymore. Go read it. I think that was great information that was in there. And then again, while I'm not a super pro-green person, I do believe that if the city went more of a green direction, especially with the city's facilities, I think it will be a cost and a reward. I think with, with moving some of the city buildings to a more greener atmosphere, that could reap the benefits of cost savings on the city and the taxpayers. So I know that was a minor mention from my memory, but I would love to see more of that, you know, put into that. But I think it's a great document. I think it's something that, and I wrote down, I mean, it goes to 2045, I think it was. So, I mean, that's a vision. This is where we're looking to go in the future. So I think that if more and more people will participate, read it, provide their input, they always say that no one listens. Well, no one's reading. So go read, pay attention to what's going on, provide that input. We're listening, we're looking, we're observing. We want to bring in those ideas and those comments and incorporate them. So that's all I want to know.
Thank you. Any more?
Did everybody notice in your water bill this month that we had a separate sheet in there asking people to go to our website to read it, come here, get it, you know, look at it, and review it, and give us comments? So we took that suggestion from the council we did here by one of our other people that was here. And that was a good suggestion. We got it out. Hopefully, people will go read it and give us comments. You know, instead of after it's completely passed and everything, and then come out with comments. So.
I think, you know, I think as a municipality, as a city, as a community, I think we've, we've done just about as well as we possibly could have from the last one-year plan. And if we are able to, in so many ways, our, you know, our downtown, our community is revitalizing. And certainly, the investment we're putting into our parks and our neighborhoods is incredible. And I'm thrilled to see that commitment continue. Because I've stated it before, that we don't, you can choose where you live. A lot of times, you know, you're fortunate in Western New York to have the job you have, but you get to choose where you live. And so this is a further just long-term commitment. And what I would, I think it's a great idea to implement a quarterly update to, you know, to bring the matrix before us and talk about what is it you're working on next, what, you know, what are our collective goals that we're going to start ticking off on the list, right? And because you do this balance of putting up fires from a day-to-day perspective when things are going wrong, and we say, Carrie, can you find a grant? Can you, you know, can you help us secure some funding for a water line or whatever, right, that we need? But at the same time, we have to keep the focus on the long-term outlook. And so it would be great to, you know, make a standing meeting quarterly to revisit this. So. And it also, correct me if I'm wrong, but it really does help us when we go for grant funding and we, you know, look for different partnerships for community development that we have a playbook.
Absolutely. Because I actually referenced the document, I mean, down to the page in the paragraph. And that matrix is very important because it shows those are our priority projects that we want to fund.
Right.
And that we need assistance for, whether it be federal, state, local, or foundation.
Okay. Thank you so much, Carrie. Appreciate it.
All right, committee reports, we have none. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Crawford. We are adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.
All right, I'll call up order, the Public Safety Committee for November 5th. Let the record show, all persons are present. Approval of minutes from the previous meeting, October 1st, 2024. I'll make a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Anastasia. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Unfinished business, we have none. New referrals, we have the SPO/SRO contract amendment. Mayor?
Yes. The, we had some corrections in the contract with the city school district on for our SROs and the SPOs. So we wanted to get this back on for next week to have the council approve the contract. I thought it was sent out to you guys. I found out today it wasn't. So I will get it out to you. And the gesture of the contract is, the additions to this contract are, we now have two SROs, one in the middle school, full-time one, and I'll take that back, one in the middle school, school year time, and one in the high school, which we weren't paying, the school is paying 65%, we are paying 35%. With the one now in the high school, that'll be the school would pay 100% because they'll use it year-round for summer school. And that. The one in the middle school, 65% the school pays, and we'll pick up 35% because we will be able to use that officer in the summer months to, or help out with patrol where it's needed here. As for the SPOs, those are special patrol officers, they are 100% covered by the school. Our obligation there is uniforms and training.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, John.
So, Bill, just to follow up on that. So I'm assuming one is an SRO and the other is an SPO, because at the high school, there's two officers. There's Officer McGraw, so he's an SRO, and then I think there's Officer Brown. Can I see the, so is there an SPO and an SRO at the high school?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, okay. Yes. The SROs are city of Olean police officers who are trained as school resource officers, can do programming, and do different things like that. The SPOs are just strictly security in the schools.
Okay. And there's an SPO in each of these schools, and there's two SROs. Is that right?
Yes, there's two SROs. One in the high school, one in the middle school. There's an SPO now in the high school and in the middle school.
Okay.
There's an SPO at Washington West and Eastfield.
Okay. Thank you.
And we have, there's four or five of them because they're part-time, you know, they have to come back. They're officers that have retired and have come back. Some work a couple of days a week, some work, so we have, I think we have four of them that, you know, use...
What school are you at?
I'm at the school at Harton House. I'm waiting to, I'm waiting to go back to work.
Yeah, it's got to retire then. Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this particular topic? All right. So we will be getting an email on those, on those changes in that amendment?
Yeah, I'll send the, the contract out.
All right, thank you, Mayor. All right, approval of committee reports, we have none. So I will make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Okay.
Seconded by McCall. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. We are adjourned.
I'll call up the order, the City Operations Committee for November 5th. Let the record show that all members are present. Approval of the committee meetings from October 15th. I'll make a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Panis. All in favor?
Aye.
Under unfinished business, right of way discussion, the original discussion from June 25th. I've met now with...
I've met now with, uh, Director Slotman twice. We charted out some things that we wanna fix in the immediate, clearing up some language. And setting some standards, uh, as to work. Just to, the big one is getting out where it says, um. Up to discretion of the Public Works Director and changing that and writing a standard so that way it's not case by case or director to director. There's a written standard, and then he also wants to streamline the application and enforcement because currently you apply at one, it's enforced by the other. There's a lot of confusion, so those are some short-term goals. He was waiting for some clarification back. And we will be meeting again, I think it's a week from this Friday. Uh, so that was, that's where we're at with that one. Under the paid parking discussion, we briefly talked about that, we tabled it, the mayor was unable to attend the last meeting. So that is back up for, for conversation and as we discuss slightly, so, uh, Bill, I'll let you.
Well, I wasn't, yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last, I wasn't sure what direction, uh, the council wanted to go, I understand that you, uh, uh. Tabled it and, uh, looking for more, uh, uh, well, it's not, I'm not sure, looking for more input from.
We tabled it because you were here to have a conversation.
Okay. So, uh, can we put this on for another meeting or compare to have a conversation?
Okay, uh, Tiffany, can you put this on for two weeks out, please? John?
Um, I just, for my two cents, I'm gonna reiterate that I'm a hundred percent behind this. Um, I think it's a great idea, I think it's something we've talked about a long time, so I'm still, I'm in favor of it, whatever the details need to be worked out. Um, you know, let us know if there's something that we need to have questions prepared beforehand or what is gonna help to bring this to the finish line. That's, that's all I'm wondering.
Uh, so really it was, uh, what we talked about two weeks ago that, you know, uh. Bill came back with a plan that kind of brought the lines in a little bit. I still sit firm my take that I was looking at city center, rate of enforcement's higher. So the details really, it's really just details, I mean, nobody's not in favor of it, it's the details of where the zones will be. How they'll get enforced, so that's, so fair, I'll let Bill send out the updated one again and that way we can have the conversations. But it's really just down to the details of the zones and, and back.
Um, might I suggest that, that we either, all of us ahead of time? Give some, you know, internal emails back and forth what, what each of us supports and, and is in favor of and just, you know. However, we wanna go about it collectively, you know, we may not all agree down to the minute detail, but maybe so that way we can bring something forward and at least rule something out.
Well, I didn't have change in the, the labor, right, it was just currently that's gotta be tabled, that's gotta be a different discussion, correct?
The what?
Well, either part-time or full-time.
I believe that the plan we sent you included a full-time.
Okay, I, I couldn't remember that.
Yeah.
So, the, the long-term jobs, I think you pulled it into like Seventh Street, so looking at that, like it's. If you agree on the, the areas, some side streets, lawns and that, the two-hour parking, and then, you're right, Bill, because we did ask for like the cost analysis, I know there was a salary breakdown. But in the interim, can you also include like a cost analysis of like, what is the projected, uh, revenue stream of, of enforcement? To offset from part-time to full-time, I get you have the salary breakdown, um, and that way we can have that to look at too. It's not an eyesight.
Yeah, and, I mean, one of the things that we had talked about was also, um, for volunteers. If, if however we might put that in there, because there was some concern about the volunteers that do the gardens and stuff. To be able to kind of give them an exemption while they're down there working or something. That came up to me by a couple of people.
We, we, we do that now, rather than the, a, uh, uh, a, uh.
Michael Platter?
Architect, yeah. So they can park and, uh.
Yeah, I'm not gonna check that one. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, as long as we got something in there, however we would do that, perfect.
Vernon, I see it. Jason?
Um, something that kinda come to mind related to that, um, that I was thinking about is contractors who have. Who have a permit to do some kind of work uptown or in these zones if parking would be included for them. Just to kinda alleviate, like, let's say they've got a two-week-long project or something, that they have a place they can. You know, park that's related to their, the duties they're doing. And not have to worry about paying the parking every day or every hour or getting kicked out or something.
Pointing at the imaginary Director Slotman, because wouldn't that fall under, can you ask, Bill, I believe that that would fall under, because if they're doing that, they would have a, a right-of-way permit.
Well, they can, if they're, if you're looking for parking for the employees of these contractors. Right now, most of them will, after going to our last, they will, they will buy permits for the month or for the day or for the, the week.
I think, wait, he's, uh. Why, if I'm working on choice video and the contractors are parked out front, they're. My trucks are working out front on choice video rather than having to put meters or money to pay every two hours. Is there something that will allow them to be there for the duration of that project?
They're gonna be, uh, a right-of-way permit.
That's what I was thinking, that'd fall under. Um, are you gonna, is there more?
As long as there's a way where it makes sense, right, so what we're doing doesn't, in some odd way, inconvenience someone that's doing the right thing. They got a permit, they're doing work, even if it's, you know, it's just private work at a business, but somebody's gonna be there for. A day or multiple days and they're not gonna be.
I think we'll have, I think we'll have to circle back to it because the right-of-way permit is usually if I'm going to be working and obstructing the right-of-way law. In my work, you're talking more, I'm just parking my truck there because I happen to be working there and I wanna park in the lot and keep walking back and forth, so it's not.
And my thought would be, you can, you can include a fee there, in that permit that they've got to do whatever they're doing. But that it's, you're, you're providing the service by taking away the inconvenience of your parking situation.
Okay. Vernon?
Yep, I was just, uh, wanted to jump on, I recall. The document that we received with all of the parking locations. But I don't recall receiving anything or anything written on that document anyway of. A part-time or full-time officer. Um, I don't just recall reading that document, so if such a document exists, could that be sent back out again? To the rest of the council, could, part of it, 'cause as I'm listening to some of the things, I'm like, wait a minute, maybe that's a conversation that you guys had in your committee? And it never reached the council. But I do recall hearing that that may be the case of a part-time or full-time. But yeah, you know, if, if that is the case, then yeah, some type of cost analysis to prove that. This, uh, particular position is gonna be beneficial, or whether it be part-time or full-time. Uh, and then the rest of this, yeah, if we can have that discussion, yeah, I mean, I can kick off the email for my thoughts on this whole thing to avoid this here.
A lot of, Dave, I see, a lot of that was, Vernon, was in-depth more in that committee meeting, I think we just touched on it, 'cause that's why I had asked that before. But in-depth in those committee meetings. We discussed, I know, I know Bill mentioned a full-time, it's currently part-time, I know I had asked about trying to get creative with it. Like, if, could you combine two part-time? People to offer a full-time to make it more attractive to one, but paid out of two, two things like bread camps paid out of three different lines. Like something like that, so that way you could split it and that way you're making two part-time jobs more attractive. And then we talked about just increasing the full-time crap, Bill. And then we also talked about like a special assignment officer. Who would be under the police department, but then only in an emergency would they get pulled out, kind of like the SRO.
I was just gonna say, we're talking about the SRO.
So like, I know, I, I mentioned there, I would talk to Brown, but like somebody that would be a special assignment. My thought was that way when you bring somebody in at your level, they could kind of do that, but then if you ever retire, you can pull that one up and backfill the. The, the backside, the, the, the underneath side. So those are discussions that we had with that, so I think that the, I, there'll probably be two different topic items.
Yep.
Um, outdated, sorry.
Yeah, just have a quick question, uh, years ago when the city had the meters out front, uh, the city did make quite a bit of money on that yearly income from the meters. But at that time, they also had stamps that they would sell to the merchants. So if you came into a merchant downtown and you bought something and you, you had a ticket or something, well, back then we had parking tickets, I don't know how this would work. Because we, I was just thinking we had parking tickets where they would put out like a half-hour parking from the merchant, so it would be free for the customer. So I don't know how this would.
What I was just talking about there is that, that wasn't for the meters at the market, that was for the parking lots.
Parking lots, yeah.
At that time, we had attendants at each parking lot. And you would, you would get your ticket, pulled in, get your ticket, and you would take that to the merchants. And merchants would put a sticker on it or.
Yeah, I said that, I figured it.
Was it a work, is that saying?
Ten minutes or whatever it was, and then, uh, they would take that back to, when it pulled up to the booth to, to leave, they would hand that to the. The attendant, he would see how much time is on there, calculate it, and they would pay the difference, or sometimes they'd have enough time to be, you know, free parking. I think, yeah, those, that was a sticker system, but that was just for the lots.
I remember that mainly served the community bank lot.
Yes, it was a big one, yeah.
Uh, John, were you?
Nope.
Anybody else? Okay, so then this will be on for two, two weeks. Uh, so no other unfinished business, under new referrals, there was the East State Street bench placement.
So it came up that the, um, benches are facing into people's houses, looking in there versus the street and. Um, actually, not just one, but we, we had a, I had a couple of people approach me about that. Um, so looking to see, can they move those benches so they're not faced towards the resident's house, but towards the street?
You know, uh, I've looked into this a little bit and the design was so people using the, uh, the walkway. Can just stop there, they got it, they're buggy or whatever, they could stop there, sit on a bench. And, uh, you know, uh, the way they're placed, it would be difficult to just switch them around. Because you won't, now people's feet are gonna be in the grass.
So is there a way, though, with the ones that do face people's houses to, to move those, and I talked to some of the, you know, the business owners who. Because we were talking about this and, and they were like, well, they wouldn't like it if the benches were right outside their windows looking in either. Um, so I think just in terms of, you know, whether it's a, a placement issue or. I get that, you know, there is rationale for doing it, it just doesn't seem like maybe it was the best rationale to meet the people who already are. Not happy about the eight-foot sidewalks, um, and then add on having the, uh, there in front of it. And I get that they could easily sit down, so I don't know if there's a way that they can be positioned where they could walk two feet and sit down in the front of it or. Just thinking.
We could talk, we could talk to the contractor, see what suggestions they come up with.
Um, I agree with the, uh, the park bench situation, uh, or the benches along East State. Uh, as you drive through the city of Olean, uh, just looking at the ones that are on State, on Wayne. And those that are positioned throughout North Union, uh, all of them are facing, uh, towards the street, not facing the store itself. Uh, I do understand that the concept was designed so that, because it's a walkable Olean and that way you can walk up, sit down, and then continue on. Uh, so in that regard, um, I, I, I do agree that, you know, that part is understandable. Uh, but the question, would it be, because you, Mayor, you mentioned that. Uh, if you flip them, because I looked at the bolts. If you flip them, they are symmetrical, however, they would be now into the grass. If you flip them around where they are, because they were placed on the backside of the concrete pad, if you flip them, now you're in the mud. So you would have all of this concrete behind the bench. So, and in order to redo the anchors, now you're talking about cutting the concrete, putting in the anchors, cement them in, and then you have the anchor points back, so. Wouldn't that be considered a change order? Hence, now we're talking more money? Yeah, versus, I, I mean, it, it would seem simpler if it was just undo the bolts, flip it around, bolt it back down, bolt, done, but.
But what I will say is that the, uh, you know, the contractor has been, uh, Millennium has been very good working with us on things, so. Uh, there's a, uh, a, a construction meeting once we, uh, we have, I've asked friend to bring this up at it. Uh, he, he couldn't be here today, he had a late afternoon doctor's appointment, so. But anyways, so, uh, and maybe there's something they come up with that's not gonna be a big, big dollar item.
Yeah, even if they, we need, uh, concrete bolts, I can't figure the name of them, but you just drill the hole and then. Concrete, you bang them in and then they expand and they grab the concrete, I mean, something like that, I mean, we're not expecting, you know. There are weight limits and they have, I think they would be strong enough to hold four bolts, to hold, so.
Yeah, I think that's all they are anyway.
Yeah.
I think those pads were poor, I haven't gone, looked right at them, but.
They're pretty thick.
Just driving by, I think they've, uh, I think they're wet jankers and they did.
Oh, jankers, yeah, probably, probably put it after the fabric was poured.
And then there is one section where they're both facing each other, which I thought was like, we can ignore that one, I think that was perfectly placed, you know. And, uh, but we still have to take consideration, you know, once you flip them, um, they still have to be ADA compliant and, uh, without that. Concrete front, you know, we would have to move them back in order to provide that extra room there, so.
Yeah, I think if we do flip them, they should go back so that you have that pad there.
Yeah.
But they should be able to come up with.
It, yeah, can, it's on the agenda, so we're gonna have to talk about tonight, but for, maybe in the future, maybe. Uh, when the people were complaining about the eight-foot sidewalks, who was gonna maintain those, could we maybe possibly put that on the agenda to see if, uh, the city was gonna. Help in maintaining those or if the resident only has to plow four feet of their eight-foot sidewalk or. Because I, I wouldn't go, it's like putting an eight-foot sidewalk in front of my house, I'd be pissed off.
At one time the council passed legislation, uh, for North Union Street. A certain width of your sidewalk had to be shuffled, but it wasn't the entire width. I'll look that up and send it out to everybody, I can't remember exactly what the width was.
In terms of coming back to the benches, I, I think we talked to like. I get the thing where people are saying that they're looking into the windows, but if you turn it around and they're just looking into the windows, roughly the same distance across the road.
But that's like that throughout.
I know, I'm just saying, but I'm just saying, what does it really change? Just a matter of whose window, somebody says they're looking into it. If I sit here, I can look into lenses, you know, if I turn this way, I'm gonna look into the other window. And on East State Street, they're all roughly the same, you know, the dis, same distance. I think moving them back, I think it's, you know, a little more uncomfortable sitting here than there's, you know. When you're facing this way, for me personally, and I know Vernon's like me, you wanna sit facing the people, now you're, if you slide that back, you have somebody walking like right directly behind you. So, I know the other thing that we had asked Bill on that too was for clarification because we had, there was people that wanted to put concrete in subways. And that was against code, and the question was, how was that concrete allowed on that subway? We need a turn. And that's, so that's something that we were looking for, for an answer on. John?
So, I guess because it's new, it's easy to point out problems with something. Has there been any problem with people actually looking through people's windows, sitting on the seats? Or is it just the appearance of that? I mean, J R makes a good point, what is the difference if you turn them down and now you're looking across the street? I mean, I, I think it's just instinctual for us to think of the worst-case scenario. Uh, it's quite a distance from, from the window, it's, they live on, you know, any of us live on a main street, it's like me saying, somebody's standing on my sidewalk and they're looking at my house. It's the sidewalk, so I guess. I'm not saying that, uh, I, I believe in being proactive, but I, I don't think there's a case of peeping toms, uh, sitting on sidewalks, at least not yet. So maybe we just, at the same time, see how it goes, and then if there is overwhelming problems, then we can address them. Because, you know, that's, A, that's one thing, and, and B, I think. And, and B, I think we could have a, definitely a discussion, um, at some point in time about it. And I brought this up quite a while ago. As we have more shared-use paths all across the city, how do we maintain them? That's a, that's a fair point, um, or how, who's responsible? You know, and hey, if we get a full-time parking enforcer, let's give him one of those little, uh, ATV vehicles, or whatever they're called, and put plow on it. And he can go up and down, and go around, uh, North Union Street and West State. But it is, it is a, uh.
If you have, we have a union.
Yeah, but anyways, those are my thoughts.
I was just asking, David, do you remember this, what you told?
Yep.
That's right.
Um, just so, you know, I pull up in the code, um, right now, zoning this or a paved, where the paved sidewalk extends across the full width of the subway to the street. It's, um, a passage of no less than four feet. So that's something that you could consider an amendment to the code too, to have to clear four feet of the shared-use path.
Thank you.
So does that, before we go on, you sort of put it on, I mean, you're the one that asked for that topic to be put on. I mean, does that answer you, or does that also?
Yeah, it's.
Looking for repair, replacement conversation to who's worried?
That's a good question, because four feet is better than shoveling eight feet, if you're out the way and you own the, you own that sidewalk. So I would say that would be a good compromise, as long as they're not responsible to shovel up the entire eight feet. That would, that would satisfy me, so. But it's probably your word, isn't it?
Well, I think it was twofold. One is the expense, um, if they have to, um, replace something, right? Um, now it's twice as much, and the other was the, um.
The maintenance.
The maintenance of it.
We'll just put it under that, have that conversation catch most of that. Anything else on the benches? Uh, there are no many reports, so I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second, my elder, and it's all favor.
All right, post.
I've called and ordered the, uh, finance committee meeting for Tuesday, November fifth. The record shows that all, all of them are present. Approval of the minutes from the previous committee meeting, which was Tuesday, October fifteenth, I'll make a motion, do I have a second?
Say.
All in favor? Post. Um, under unfinished business, we do have the fleet maintenance request that was originally brought up on October fifteenth. It was regarding, um, a total of, uh, although there are three different, um, issues brought forward on that. So Mayor, is this for you tonight, or?
I understand that you have, or has, yeah, all the information that you requested has been sent to you. Could the alderman, am I correct in that?
So I think what we had asked, um, Dr. Sotman, was, uh, because there were, going back in my memory now, we, we actually had three things. Two of them were, uh, two, they're not side-by-sides, but, um, what are, what are they called? Well, there were two mowers, and then there were two kind of side-by-sides, and then there was the truck that we needed.
One side-by-side to replace a broken one, and then there was the two flail mowers.
Right. And then there was the truck that was.
Truck to replace the damaged truck.
And so as we were looking at it, the question was, and that came out of the fleet in terms of recommendations, is, you know, we were looking to not deplete our general fund in that. And so looking to see what needs to happen in the here and now, and I think that's what we, we requested is, you know, are these things that need to happen now? Is there money within budget lines to help support them? So that's where I think we left. Anyone else? JR?
The other question was, um, I believe he indicated that mowers were ordered?
Yes.
Did, Bill, he indicated that mowers had been ordered, and the question was?
How did they get ordered if there was no potential funding?
Well, no, the, uh... It appears that the prior, uh, manager down at the East City Rides, mechanics, chief mechanic, may have ordered the, uh, tractors, the two tractors. Uh, there's no proof, there's no purchase orders, there's nothing that way there. So the vendor, uh, gave us a call and said, the, uh, they're in. And we had, we searched, there's no records, there's no records of fleet, there's no records anywhere. So we're, we're under no obligation to purchase them. And, and in the past mechanic defense, that was just the, uh, the salesman saying that. So we had, as we researched their records, and there was nothing that indicated that they had that.
Okay, so when Ben said they had been ordered, they had not?
Yes. And I think that county misspoke on that, so.
Great, so I, I brought up my notes from the, my Facebook, uh, alderman page, just to recollect everyone on it. But the, the fleet maintenance had discussed replacing an all-terrain vehicle, side-by-side for twelve K. Uh, that was for, uh, and then there's a truck, F-150, two, F-250? Uh, and we already have twenty-three grand towards that, and the vehicle is gonna be forty-five to fifty grand to replace. And then lastly, were the two John Deere tractors, uh, that were with the trade would be one eighteen. Uh, so now we know that, that we're not obligated to, so that takes us back to the truck, uh, replacement. And we all know what happened there for that vehicle replacement, and then the twelve K for the side-by-side, so that's where we're at there. But, um, I know when, we did receive the email that gave the, oh, I'm sorry, I may be mixing two things now. We do have the general fund balance, but I think the fleet balance did not have enough funds to take care of these two items. So the question was, I guess, did the city have a suggestion for where the funding would come from?
I'll come back.
So with the confusion on the tractor stock, is the price of one eighteen accurate, Bill?
That's the last price, yeah, he said, they reduce it fee a little bit, and he's still trying to, uh, he still would like us to purchase those tractors.
I didn't know if that, where that number came from, through asking, or if that was something with that confusion they ordered.
Yeah, it's also in the fleet minutes.
Yeah, do we have, it's in the mess here in the fleet from a September meeting, but do we have the money, that one hundred and eighteen thousand in the current budget, or is this?
No.
For the lawn mowers? Because it says with it, they're gonna get twenty thousand dollars on a trade. The broken lawn mowers.
Right, so my understanding is that, other than the twenty-three thousand, there is no money available or set aside for the all-terrain or the, um, John Deere tractor.
And the balance of the truck.
And the balance of the truck. And clearly, and one of the things we had asked, which we've asked before, is, you know, clearly, we, we understood that that, and we'd asked Ben to say, you know, if, if there is a priority, what is it? Because I, we were leaning towards the F-250. But one of the questions that we've had kind of consistently is, is there the opportunity for shared use with vehicles? As opposed to just replacing vehicles, is there the opportunity for shared use between departments? And I think that's where we were kind of at, and, and looking at the fleet, and I did pull up all, um, uh, in, I don't know if it was in the last treatment, or the one before. They had given out the complete list of all the vehicles. Yep.
So it's just one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, right?
Yes.
The vehicle that was, that was stolen in total, that was assigned to the recreation center. Okay, and the recreation center is responsible for, uh, plowing around the recreation center. Uh, if the snow is light, they, they plow the, uh, they plow the, uh, parking lot, and war, with the war vets. And they go down to franchise, and they plow around there. And, uh, so, uh, I think it's very important that, uh, that they get a vehicle back that has a plow. And, uh, they haul chemicals back and forth, you know, and it's, it's needed, so, uh, you know, the twenty, uh, Ray Smith had some pricing on the new vehicles. He, uh, he priced out used vehicles, and it was, at the time, it was just as, uh, just as economical to use a new vehicle instead of a, a used one.
So Mayor, the, the price that was there, though, is that inclusive of the, the plow? Or are we able to use the existing plow on there and plowing deck and just?
Yeah, that included a new plow.
Okay.
Okay.
So it totally includes the new plow?
So if you currently have the old plow, why would you not just put a plow harness and a plow mount?
I don't know.
On the truck side, so.
I don't have a question for you. So, I'm not sure if it'll, if, uh, yeah, I don't have any answer. I gotta figure that out.
Do, your question, I would have two, did we get any insurance money from that vehicle that was stolen in total from?
That's the twenty-three thousand, I think.
Twenty-two or twenty-three, let me see, twenty-three, yeah.
So I think that is information that we're always looking for, is what else does it do? So knowing that it plows at franchise and war, war vets is, you know, I think that's kind of what we're looking for, to make sure that, you know, with the vehicles we have, what percentage of downtime do they have? And I think that's the question that historically keeps coming up. But I, of all of them, this was the one that I think we were in agreement, that it seemed to, uh, make sense to, to go forward on. If we can, just put the existing plow, because that wasn't damaged, because it was during the spring or summer that it was stolen, on the new truck. I mean, that's what I would do if I had a truck with a plow. I guess I would want to see, you know, what cost savings that would give us. And it might be a couple of thousand, but that's a couple of thousand savings for, um, the city residents, and that we have to find.
That would be four to five thousand.
Four to five.
Truck side is just a mound with some wiring harnesses.
So Mayor, can we see if, if we can put the existing plow that we have, that we own already, on, and if, if that would decrease the, uh, overall cost? Because I see we have a range here of forty-five to fifty thousand. And then I think we're inclined in knowing that there's a, a need for that. Now, as for the other two, um, you know, the all-terrain side-by-side and the John Deere tractors, the, the question was, are, are those things that need, the need is now? Or can we kind of look at it and plan for those and, and see? Because there's not any money that I see in, um, sitting around, ready for us to pay for it, right? I mean, you, I think Ben had said there's no money in budget lines for it to help towards it.
No, but, uh, no, we can, uh, the need is not there right now, but it's gonna be in the spring, we're gonna, the need's gonna be there, so we can, uh, work on that at budget time.
Okay, that sounds fair. Okay, so if we can put those, and then, you know, we'll have, I think the truck, all we need to know is, can we put the existing, um, plow on, and what the cost savings is? And then we can put the all-terrain side-by-side and the John Deere tracker, tractors off until, uh, spring, when we'll need them? And that gives us time to plan and put into some budget? John, you're shaking your head?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Trevor?
Yes.
So, Bill, the mowers can make it another mowing season? I'm asking because you said that budget season, well, mowing starts April, May, and budget season is after that, so.
I'd like to get a, I'd like to get a full report of where he, what he.
Maybe, well, that's why I asked that, just, just budgets after that.
Good point.
There also may be money that could be encumbered and utilized, it all depends on.
Or if they wanna sell the, actually, the ordered ones, they could come up with some more coupons.
Well, I can also think that's a good suggestion in terms of encumbered dollars. Any other discussion on the fleet maintenance request?
Yeah, uh, if, if we are looking to move forward with the truck and the ATV, how will they be paid for?
I think she said just the truck.
I think that's what the mayor said, that, that if we looked on, on the truck.
Said the UTV can be tabled through, right?
That's what I thought, but maybe I misunderstood.
That's in pretty bad shape, so, but they don't.
Does your mind, where they use it for, Bill? I forgot what you said.
Use it at, uh, forests, uh, parks, they use it at the stadium.
Just, did they use that to come up, did they, I can't remember if they used that to do sanding, installing in different places.
I'll, I'll, I'll find out on that. What I, my thoughts are too, is that, uh, we may be able to work on possible funding, uh, you know, opportunities that we may have. Within, not only within the budget, but we have, I'll just throw that out, that we have, uh, a few thousand dollars in the ARCA funds that we still have to command, so.
Okay, so, um, Will, you're, you're gonna give us the information that I, yeah, yes, Lenz.
Let me say something, uh, capital budget one or two in vehicle replacement fund? We started the year with twenty-two thousand dollars. We lost that money we got from the insurance. We have forty-three right now, forty-three, fifty, so I don't know how much the truck is, um, to use that money to owe the truck.
So we would, well, potentially, if, if we didn't have to pay for a new plow and such, it looks like that would definitely cover it. Because what we got was a range of forty-five to fifty thousand.
So, and we could use that if we, if we had whatever left in the ARCA fund, I think it was like, once again, take a look. Could you use that money to, to break the truck?
Well, so when he's looking at that sign, I mean, if that's the case, if Bill said his ARCA funds, or he's gonna look up. I mean, if you're at forty-three, roughly the low end, plus or minus, you might be able to use that, plus the ARCA to grab the plow, or, I'm sorry, the truck. Using the old plow and the UTV, and maybe just have a few thousand to come out of general fund.
We'll, we'll work that out. We'll come back with a, a plan.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
The ARCA balance is eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety cents.
That's correct.
And then the mayor was gonna let us know too, what, what else the, they do with the all-terrain vehicle? I mean, if there is some application in the winter, if they do the sanding and such, it sounds like, because that was one of the questions. Okay, thank you. So we should put that back on for two weeks? Does that work now?
We'll try to make it work.
Okay.
I'll do my best.
Okay, okay.
Weird, no rush, Mayor.
I think the, the fleet and Ben might have added a rush there.
Most part of the two.
Well, I was just, actually, I have, uh, just got some.
I was just gonna say, it has to be three weeks out before we get the approval of the PL. I mean, if you just have to come up with a plan, couldn't you be prepared to have that for PL next week? I mean, here in November, uh, today, if you need a truck and a plow, it's gonna be snowing relatively soon.
Uh, we have a fleet meeting Friday, so I will.
Okay.
We'll put that, we'll talk about that, and we'll come back with it. So is everybody okay if I, uh, we do have a plan, put it out for PL for Tuesday night?
That's what I was trying to say, is that we're two weeks faster.
Okay.
Hi. As long as we kind of stay within that funding that they gave us, the, kind of that range.
The fleet replacement, the ARCA.
And the, uh, one oh two.
One oh two.
Yeah, one oh two. One, one oh two.
Yeah. The replacement, then your ARCA, to look at those two white ones. Yeah, the replacement, then your ARPA to look at those two items.
All right. Thank you.
So new referrals for consideration, the CPL change order for the splash park construction inspection.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, just to give you guys an update, um, we are, if you don't mind, Mayor. Mayor and I have been working with Clark Patterson Lee with our, also with PV, uh, PV paving, is that right? Uh, the installation, yeah, PV paving, uh, is scheduled, did you guys, see, I should, sorry. No, no, there, there should be.
Three, I used...
Oh, there's four of you, Mark. One, two, three, oh, here's one for Mayor.
Three, oh, I thought you had that.
All right, now we're all good. There were four people over there. Uh, so, we should be breaking ground, uh, so good news, we'll be breaking ground due to the favorable fall weather. November eleventh is the scheduled date, uh, according to Clark Patterson Lee. Uh, the, the idea is that they're going to be doing some site prep work, um, laying things out and so forth, and also trying to build the pump house before the weather turns, and then they can do internal work in the pump house, um, during the, the winter months. So, uh, so that's good news, with still the, uh, game plan is to have the grand opening, um, on Memorial Day of 2025. So, some housekeeping work here, um, I've just kind of laid out, just, I know we haven't talked about it in a while, uh, just giving you kind of an idea of what the original, really early estimate circa 2022 was, the breakdown and where we stand as far as funding goes. Um, so the ban, all right, the bond anticipation note is one point six million, uh, one point, one million, six hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty-one, uh, was raised from the ban, the ban, and then, uh, for our ARPA funds that were contributed was five hundred thousand dollars. So we, um, decided to borrow initially, uh, a little bit more with the uncertainty what the installation would come back with, so, uh, funds available, it's around two million, one hundred and eleven thousand dollars. Now, that's compared to the original estimate of about one point six million dollars for the project. Uh, we have paid Vortex for all of the equipment, so now, um, can't return to center, we own a hundred and two thousand dollars worth of the Vortex equipment. Uh, we've also paid fifty-two thousand dollars, which is roughly about two sets of twenty-five thousand dollars for the original design, which was to replace the pool, and then, based on really community involvement and, uh, the council, the mayor, the, the redesign to say, can we, you know, keep the pool, uh, and so that's fifty-two thousand that's been paid to CPL. The next is for the, the ban funding, uh, that's been paid to municipal solutions, is the twenty-four hundred dollars, and the two hundred dollar, uh, amount has been paid to the county health department. Uh, so our current balance, as it stands, is one point two five three, all right? The installation, the bid that we awarded to PV paving came in quite favorably, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five forty. It leaves us with two, uh, things to, to have to address here. The first is the need for inspection services. As we're all aware, uh, we've lost another one of our city engineers, and so, the mayor and I reached out, asked Clark Patterson Lee to provide us a quote for inspection services, that the first document provided to you, uh, as backup there, they gave us two quotes, essentially a full-time onsite resident, I think, north of ninety thousand, if I'm not mistaken. Ninety-seven thousand was option one. Option two is having, uh, really a, a large involvement onsite individual at first, as the construction starts, and then kind of scaling back to as needed, uh, rather than twenty-four seven onsite, and, and that price comes down to seventy-two thousand, nine hundred. Clark Patterson Lee felt confident that that would probably be a good option for us to, um, you know, still make sure that everything is being done correctly and up to spec, um, as we're obviously investing a considerable amount into Warbets Park here. Uh, and so that's the first thing that I'm bringing forward to you tonight, um, is a change order to, uh, address that, that need for inspection services. Uh, they'll work with, and they've got already the relationship going on with PV paving, um, for the kickoff meeting, et cetera, and this will just formalize that service, uh, between now and through the end of the, um, the project. The second item, uh, that is really coupled together, uh, is, that we have to address, is the, uh, cost associated with what Clark Patterson Lee, uh, did and performed regarding the DEC and Army Corps easements and permitting. And originally, that's the, so the second document I provided you is their original scope of work. If you look in their original scope of work, on the, um, I believe it's on the second page, towards the bottom, uh, there is a, there is a fine print, so to, so to speak, that says that, uh, DDC permitting is not included. They provided an original estimate, if everything was normal, okay, sixty-five hundred dollars. The result was, everything wasn't normal, dur, back in nineteen seventy, when the original swimming pool project was put in, there were never easements granted and flood control documentation put in place at Warbet Park. And, and so, the DEC, the Army Corps of Engineers said they would not grant the permit to do the work there without having those proper easements and design, flood control designs put in place. So the, uh, original, the actual cost of this came to about sixty-two, I think sixty-two five, uh, but the mayor and I were able to kind of work back and forth with Clark Patterson Lee, as a show of good faith, they, I think, subtracted that original, what they originally quoted us, they took a look at what sort of just was just basic communication back and forth between themselves and the Army Corps. We know that had been on for probably about seven months, eight months, um, all that time of that delay, but this is something that would have had have been done, whether it's on this project, or as we look to redesign the pool, uh, it's, we would have needed the, this, uh, the proper easements and, and documentation, um, to, to do the, the redesign now, it's our next phase, is doing the pool. So we are, uh, on the hook and are asking the council, uh, to consider, uh, the change order for fifty-five thousand dollars. Now, the good news is, both of those fees can be absorbed within the project cost without going over budget. Uh, after we pay PV paving, uh, the, for the inspection services, is seventy-two nine and fifty-five thousand for the, uh, change order regarding the, related to the easements and, and the permitting, it'll still remain sixty, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight thirteen. Uh, I would say then subtract, say, that original ARPA funding, that I don't think we will need, uh, I don't, I don't think the mayor or I foresee any additional overruns, and it still will leave us with a project contingency cost of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight thirteen. Uh, so, that's a long story short, I'm happy to entertain any questions, um, at this time. Yep.
That ninety-seven two on this document's not included in here, correct?
No, uh, if you, did you flip the page? If you flip the page, it's option two, JR, not this ninety-seven two, it's option two.
Okay, I saw that.
Yes.
Okay.
So we, we went with the cheaper option.
Okay. Got lost in all the numbers.
Sorry.
So the bold one, do these two add up?
That's correct.
So...
And we're not voting on anything tonight, so you do have some time here, but this will be coming forward for resolution next week.
So if you don't use it, don't need it, ARPA funding, do we lose it? Can we use it for something else?
So we already spent the actual ARPA funding. Essentially, what this is, is we borrowed more in that ban, so when we roll over to a bond, we won't have to finance that five hundred thousand dollars. Do you understand?
Now we do.
Okay, that's, I, I know it's confusing, we, we had a little bit of a cushion, we borrowed more, expecting the installation, expecting things to be maybe higher than they were, they came back favorable, we don't need that additional money, so when, because a ban is just temporary funding, will allow that half a million dollars to go back to the, you know, to the finance world there, and when we roll to a bond, it should be less than the original million dollar expected bond. Any other comments or questions at this time? Okay, so just so you're aware, this will be coming forward next Tuesday. Uh, if you have any questions in the meantime, let the mayor and myself know. Thank you.
Okay. So committee reports? We have none. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alderman Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.